Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer.
Here.
Silent prayer followed by flag salute by Councilmember Malsen. In honor of Veterans Day.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Replay statement.
Aaron. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, November 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 10th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions or deletions? None? Presentations. New employee introduction, Claire Tyson, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to introduce Claire Tyson, our Finance Director this evening. Claire actually started about two weeks ago. And she's kind of dove into the city and the city finances. She comes with a solid reputation in government financing and a variety of experience with some different organizations. Most recently, she's been working for the city of Stockton. And she started with Stockton about six years ago. She was hired as the Budget Officer to be part of the bankruptcy recovery team. So she came in and started working with them to do their bankruptcy recovery. And they liked her so much, they promoted her about three years ago to the Assistant Finance Officer. And so she also has experience as Associate Vice President in financing services for California State University Stanislas and as Director of Finance for San Joaquin Delta College and then some private sector accounting experience. She also has an education with a Bachelor of Science degree. Excuse me, I lost my place here. Bachelor of Science degree in accounting and a Master's in managerial accounting. So very good qualifications. And she lives nearby with her family. She's a resident of Lockford, where she enjoys her time with her family. And she's very familiar with Galt. She spends a lot of time here in our community, eating at the restaurants and doing some shopping. So she's very familiar, you know, with the city of Galt. So please help me bring in Claire.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you much, very much for the warm welcome. Good evening, Mayor Herr and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here, real privilege to serve for the city of Galt. As Jean said, I am a resident of Lockford, so I'm right down the street, about 15 minutes. And like many of the people in Lockford, I shop here. My grandkids have gotten swimming lessons from your Aquatic Center. I bring our loads of kids down every summer. We've been to many of your events. We love your restaurants and shops. So it's a great pleasure to be part of this community in a different way by serving the city. I'm eager to work with the team. I've already gotten to know some of the team members and some of you a little bit. And I'm eager to get started on some of the projects and challenges moving forward. I'm also available to any of you anytime you have any questions or need anything. Thank you.
Welcome, Claire.
Thank you very much.
Farm-to-Fork Dinner, Galt Future Farmers of America Agriculture Boosters.
Mayor and City Council, as they come up to the podium, I'd like to just make a statement on the fact that the Farm-to-Fork Dinner, the Galt High School Homecoming Parade and Liberty Ranch Homecoming Parade, those are all special events that were approved by the city of Galt and will be, at the end of this fiscal year, will be brought forward to you with costs associated with those events.
Did you want to play the video right now?
Yeah, is that okay?
Uh huh.
We did a little video so you could get a feel for what the event was like if you weren't able to attend, which many here were. And thank you so much for the support. But just so you can kind of get an idea of what it was like.
Now?
Yeah, perfect. I've been quiet for too long. I found peace in your violence. Can't show me there's no point in trying. I'm at one. And I've been silent for too long. I've been quiet for too long. I found peace in your violence. Can't show me there's no point in trying. I'm at one. And I've been quiet for too long. I'm in need of a savior. But I'm not asking for favors. My whole life I felt like a burden. I think too much and I hate it. I'm so used to being in the wrong. I'm tired of caring. Loving never gave me your heart. So I sit here in the silence. I found peace in your violence. Can't show me there's no point in trying. I'm at one. And I've been quiet for too long. I've been silent for too long. I've been quiet for too long. Perfect, thank you. So as you can see, it was just a really fun event for our community to come together and as a part of our mission, teach people about agriculture and celebrate local agriculture. So many of the items there were local businesses and local products grown. And it was just a really nice evening to visit and meet people from our community and even have some out-of-town guests. The furthest was someone from Chicago. Found us on Eventbrite.com and emailed and said, "Do you think this would be a good event for someone who isn't from Galt?" And I said, "You'll come and you'll love it and you'll want to move here." And they came up to me after and said, "Thank you so much for encouraging us to come because I can't think of a better thing to do on a vacation than enjoy an event like this." So I think it was just something that our community could be really proud of. And on behalf of Galt Ag Boosters, thanks so much to everyone who came and supported this event and supported our students. So I also want to give a little bit of time to just thank the city. Armando and Jackie just went above and beyond to host us and make sure that the promenade would work for an event like this. We weren't sure about that in the beginning. But the feedback was just that it was so special and we could not have done it without the support and encouragement from all of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was wonderful. Galt High School Homecoming Parade. Galt High School Associated Student Body. Okay. Liberty Ranch High School Homecoming Parade. Liberty Ranch High School. No? Okay. Public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on the items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Do you not have a card? No speaker cards? Any speakers? Okay. Reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Start with Councilman Campion.
Last week, on the HCP Board, first meeting. We have another one scheduled later this month. Chris and I both attended. So I think we're still getting a lot of the documents put together. There were some minor changes in the ordinance. So we'll be coming back to the council once the county has taken action on it, on some of the minor revisions. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson?
Yeah, we had a Galt Youth Commission meeting last night. And Jackie Garcia with Parks and Rec came by to ask the Youth Commission to volunteer for the lighting of the night and the bird festival. And they're still kind of in the planning stages of what they want to do for the year. And so the Council or the Commission discussed the "It Can Wait", the texting campaign, Random Acts of Kindness, supporting people in need. They want, they were thinking about a '40s band, helping adults with technology. So having little sessions where some adults can learn how to use their phones and their computers. And also helping those that are trying to learn English. So they've got a lot of great ideas. They're still deciding which ones. They want to do all of them, but we're not sure they're going to have time for that. I went to the Buchanan Auto Glass Anniversary. They've been a business in town for, was it 14 years?
16.
16, because I knew some of you guys were there too. The Thin Blue Line fundraiser was great. Our chief was the speaker on that, did a good job. And they had a couple of people who've lost family members. So that was quite heartwarming. And for the first fundraiser, I think things went really well. And then I also attended the Chamber Lunch at Barstetti's where Rich Lozano talked about everything the CSD offers. Holy cow. And the chief, the fire chief there also talked about they can help with anything from car seats to 10-minute CPR lessons. I mean, it's just amazing. So need to look into that. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Malsen?
Okay, it's been a little busy. I happened to fall into the unmet needs hearing. I attended that. And then the Blue Angel Hope BBQ, which was a great event. All Area Historical Society had their Charter Night with their new board. And I attended a Measure R meeting, Chamber Monthly Business Mixer, Commission on the Aging. Stuck my head in there. River Oaks had a Friday Sing. It's kind of a cute little thing. So I went to that, fine, I was able to. I'm retired, I can do that. So that was fun. And the Rotary Oktoberfest and the Buchanan Auto Glass and the Youth Commission, stuck my head in there last night also.
Mark? Vice Mayor Cruz?
I'm sorry?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Well, I ended up chairing the Sacramento Area Council Government's Unmet Transit Meeting. Also attended the SAICOG Transportation Meeting where the discussion on the upcoming grants was made. Kind of a bittersweet for the city of Galt. We're still working on this, correct? We're not really happy with the outcome. We're going to make it better. Also attended the Sacramento Metropolitan Air District. You have to excuse me. We were discussing, believe it or not, the current trend towards autonomous vehicles and how it may lead towards reduction of greenhouse gases and such. Don't go out and buy one right now. They're still in infancy. One of the other things, again, attended the Buchanan Auto Glass 16-year anniversary. Very, very solid business in this community and very happy that they're still here. And I was this close to making it here for you guys with the Youth Commission. I was literally about a minute off. But I did stick around because there was something even more important that I needed to bring to their attention. SAICOG has launched their youth group, similar to what we have with the Youth Commission, but at a regional level. So wanted to make sure that they all knew that they could go online and apply for it. And they're going to be taking from each of the individual municipalities. So they'll take one senior and one junior. So I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. Cool. And that's what I got.
So I attended the Blue Angel Dinner. It was wonderful. It was great to see the turnout, how successful it was. Had the pleasure of attending Measure R, the Commission on Aging, and the Youth Commission last night to thank them for their service to the community. We couldn't do it without them. And I attended Library Authority where we discussed their reserve policy. They want to do a 45% reserve policy. So there was lots of discussion about that. And so now they're going to have a fiscal meeting in which they're inviting our fiscal staff to either attend online or to, I mean, either to do it by phone or you can meet with them in person. But I've sent the information to Jean. So it does, the reserve policy doesn't really impact us except that it does put a lot of their money aside in a reserve. And for economic uncertainty, also for their capital improvement plan. Otherwise, it's all good. So thank you. Information consent calendar. We have minutes of the regular meeting of October 16th, 2018, receiving and file warrants for period ending October 24th, South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, approval of landscape maintenance agreements for frontage improvements along East Stockton Boulevard. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Malsen, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Scheduled matters. 2325th Street, General Plan Amendment, Rezone and Design Review Project. Mr. Arias?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you is a request for a General Plan Amendment, rezone and design review for 325th Street. The project site is located on 5th Street, near C Street, adjacent to the Spahn's retail outlet. The site is zoned downtown commercial with a requested rezone. The applicant is proposing a total rehab of the existing structure. It includes new sidewalk, landscaping, interior, exterior renovations, as well as a 490-square-foot addition to the rear of the home. So in order to complete the project as requested, it requires the General Plan Amendment, rezone, and design review. And that's a lot of entitlements for a simple addition. So I'll expand a handful of slides. So as mentioned, the site is zoned downtown commercial or DC. And the existing single-family home is a legal non-conforming use. And what that means is a single-family home is not in approved use in the zone. But because the home existed prior to the zoning, we consider it legal but non-conforming. But what that means is you can't expand a legal non-conforming use. So under the current zoning, the addition would not be allowed. Therefore, we have to do the rezone. And if we're doing a rezone, then we have to apply a general plan land use that is then consistent with the zoning. Oh, there we go. So we chose the downtown mixed-use zone for a couple reasons. If you look at the exhibit on the screen on the right-hand side, that's the zoning exhibit. I mean, the colors are somewhat similar to the general plan. But the purple is the downtown mixed-use, so it matches the zoning to the properties to the south. And then in addition to that, a single-family home is a permitted use in the mixed-use zone. The mixed-use zone also provides flexibility with design standards like setbacks and also density. So it's really a nice use to have. Then, as you would imagine, the matching land use would then be mixed-use. So that's why you have the similar mixed-use land use and downtown mixed-use. So that's the reason for the home addition, is it's a legal non-conforming use. 325th Street is listed as a historic resource in the city's general plan. Because it's a historic resource, it must have design review approval for exterior renovations. The design review approval requires approval from the city's Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, or HPAK. And it also has to meet city requirements in the Galt Municipal Code. And the Galt Municipal Code requirements for historic rehabs, they match, it matches the Secretary of State's design criteria for historic properties. And this project meets the requirements. Materials used are either original or closely matched. The property owner has gone through great lengths to respect the historic architecture, including saving the original siding. His plan is to save original siding and use it on the front of the home. The rest of the home will have matching siding. He's also rehabbing the front door rather than replacing. So he's done a great job of really respecting that historic nature. He's also increasing, well, the square footage, but he's putting dormers on the second floor on the front and rear, which is a historic element. It is something you often find in historic homes. And it does help punch up the facade. But in addition to that, it's a practical reason for putting in the dormers. The second-floor rooms, they actually have a pretty low ceiling, especially on the lower end of the pitch of the roof. So the dormers actually provide a little bit more headroom in the second floor. And then, excuse me. So the addition to the home matches the existing structure and is consistent with code requirements. The addition creates, obviously, additional square footage, which makes the home more marketable for the owner. This project was presented to the HPAK and Planning Commission. Both recommended approval. The only issue discussed by the HPAK was the color of the home. They felt the original color was some sort of red burgundy color. But the applicant picked that light blue color because it was the color that exists today. But neither cared which color it was. Both are historic colors. But that was really the only issue. So we're really excited about the project. I mean, it's been a long vacant property. It needs rehab. We're really excited that the property owner is doing the rehab. And we're glad that he's in the city. And that concludes the staff presentation. The council is asked tonight to open a public hearing and upon closing the public hearing, approve the resolution approving the General Plan Amendment and Design Review and then introduce the ordinance approving the rezone. The applicant, David Wilson, and staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
So I just have one. If it was still zoned commercial and they wanted to expand and put something commercial there, would they still, would we need to rezone? Just out of curiosity.
No. If what they were doing was consistent with the zoning, a rezone would not be required.
Okay. Okay. Open public hearing? Do you have any public comment? Close public hearing? Any further questions? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Do you have any comments? We should give you an opportunity to talk if you have any.
I could certainly answer any questions if you had any.
Well, it's exciting to see it.
Yeah.
It's been vacant and eyesore for quite some time, so.
Have you been by lately?
Yes.
A lot of people have. We get people stopping and taking pictures. We don't know who they are. A lot of people ask me a lot of questions about the house. So I think a lot of people are excited to see it happen. It's starting to look like a house event, so we're excited about that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it's an exciting project.
Okay. Do I have a motion to introduce an ordinance?
So moved.
Mayor, the first action is to adopt the resolution.
Oh.
And we do need two separate actions, but yes.
I need a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed General Plan Amendment and Design Review.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Do I have a motion to introduce an ordinance approving the proposed rezone?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Malsen, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Item number two, 500 Fairway Drive, General Plan Amendment and Rezone and Zoning Text Amendment to Allow Billboards.
So I just decided to stay up here. So as you noted, the item you have before you is a request for a General Plan Amendment and rezone at the city-owned property of 500 Fairway Drive. And then also a zoning text amendment to the Galt Municipal Code to allow a billboard sign. As you may recall, earlier this year, the City Council directed staff to work with TERRA Advisors for the purpose of selecting a sign company to lease a portion of the land at 500 Fairway Drive for the installation and operation of electronic billboard. The council based this direction on a billboard sign assessment that showed the city could generate between $50,000 and $100,000 per year by leasing a portion of the property to a sign company. The Galt market currently uses the site for parking, which will not change. The market also has a large sign on the site. And it should be noted, there used to be a billboard on the site, but I believe it was taken down in 2008. The selected sign company would build and maintain the site. And the sign, I should say, the city would just be leasing the land. The actions today are to change the code to allow for the sign. The actual construction of the sign would come back to the City Council at a separate public meeting. So we have to do three entitlements, as I mentioned. In order to solicit a response from sign companies and pave the way for the sign and also to meet Caltrans requirements, we have to do three things. And that's a General Plan land use change, a rezone, and then amend the zoning code, or the zoning code. So Caltrans does not allow signs on non, or sites that are not zoned commercial. So we have to provide a commercial zoning to the site, which is the rezone. And again, as you, from the previous discussion, if we're rezoning the site, we have to have a matching land use. So we're changing the zone from public quasi-public to highway commercial. And then the land use will change from public quasi-public to commercial. And then we're amending the Galt Municipal Code to allow for billboards. The current, the code currently does not allow billboards. Our goal with the amendment was to allow for the billboard signs, but also try to limit the impact and the proliferation of signs. And we did this by restricting location and size. And you can see the size limitation of 672 square feet on the screen. Some location restrictions included 200 feet from residential. The Caltrans requirement was 100 feet from residential. We doubled that. Also, the signs can't be located in a Caltrans landscape district. And Caltrans on sections of freeway, they designate landscape districts. They're basically portions of the freeway with better-looking landscaping. We also then put in a distance from other digital billboards of 1,000 feet and 500 feet from static billboards. And then the way the code is written, only, signs can only be in the highway commercial zone. So based on the criteria, 1,000 feet from other signs, zoning, landscape districts, and also site visibility, other signs are really limited on where they can locate in the city limits. If you look at the zoning map up on the screen, the red sections along Highway 99 show landscape districts. So signs can't be placed there. And based on, again, the zoning, visibility, and other criteria, the only available site left is really the highway commercial site at the Simmerhorn Commercial. And so that was the site where Walmart was initially slated to go, years ago. We felt we can further regulate the signs through the operating agreement process. This process not only allows staff to review each proposal for consistency with these requirements, it also gives you all a chance to hear that, not only at Planning Commission, but at City Council. So this photo shows the probable location of the sign. We figured it would go at the corner of Caroline and Fairway Drive to provide the maximum separation from the nearby homes. And it's, as you can see, over 300 feet, which then exceeds our 200-foot requirement. But again, we're not placing the sign today. This is really just for the code amendments and the General Plan Amendment. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at its September meeting. And the Planning Commission voted to continue the item to the October meeting based on a number of issues. And those issues are shown on the screen. And rather than talk about each one now, I'm going to talk about them in the next handful of slides. So at the first meeting, the So at the first meeting, the Planning Commission discussed the possibility of increasing the 1,000-foot Caltrans requirement separation, and then also talked about the possibility of limiting the number of signs in the city. But at the second Planning Commission, they ultimately recommended a separation of 4,000 feet between electronic billboards. And if you look at the map up on the screen, it shows what 4,000 feet would look like on Highway 99. And so from the 500 Fairway Drive location, 4,000 feet would extend beyond now the Simmerhorn Commercial Site up to essentially the Simmerhorn-Highway 99 connection. So that eliminates the Simmerhorn location from a possible sign, for a possible sign. And then further south, you could see that it basically eliminates any other billboard in the city, or south of the project site. So the proposed code remains unchanged. We kept the 1,000-foot separation in there. The city council can adopt a Planning Commission recommendation or deliberate on another if it feels fit, or if it sees fit. Staff supports the 4,000-foot separation requirement, and the Planning Commission did require it on both sides of the freeway. This would limit the proliferation of signs in the city. Couple other items that they talked about pertain to the request for proposals. What this project will include will be sending out a request for proposals to sign companies, basically to bid on the site to construct and operate a billboard. And our concern about putting in criteria in the RFP was, we didn't want to limit the possible number of people responding to the RFP in order to get the best competition and best price we can for the site. So the items that the Planning Commission talked about putting into the RFP were doing some sort of, you know, making space available to local businesses, and then also making sure that it's in the RFP that we recoup our fee of $15,000 for the consultant cost to actually, for the sign assessment, and also for the RFP process itself. So again, initially, we were concerned about, you know, limiting, you know, the people responding to the RFP, so we were reluctant to put them into the RFP. But after consultation with our sign consultant, we don't feel that this is really out of the ordinary, and we didn't have any problem putting these type of items in the RFP. Another item, or number five, referred to, there was a local businessman that came to the meeting, and he indicated that he believed that a large billboard would basically hurt local business by blocking the view of the other existing monument signs on Fairway Drive. He also indicated that it's unusual to have billboards and other freestanding monument signs on the same street. So in your packet, we did provide some photos of existing monument signs with electronic billboards. We also looked to see if there was any data to show that billboards hurt local businesses, and we could not find any data to support that. So what we showed to the Planning Commission at the second meeting was essentially this photo on the screen. And if you can see the Les Schwab sign in the middle of the photo, then further left or further south on Fairway Drive, you have the Burger King sign. Where you see that little dip in the tree canopy is the probable location for our billboard. And based on the angle of the freeway, you can see there's really no chance that the billboard is going to block the visibility of the other freestanding signs. So in discussion with this, with Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was content with that response, and this was not an issue at the second meeting. You know, what was talked about, though, at the second meeting was that, it was believed that if an electronic billboard comes there, that it actually attracts attention to that side of the road and actually probably gets these signs more visible. But that's opinion, that's not, you know, any study to conclude that. The Planning Commission also recommended that all revenue generated from the billboard remain in the Parks and Rec budget. The Planning Commission understands that I don't have budget authority, but the commission wished to make the recommendation known to council. They did not want to see less funds allocated to Parks and Rec based on the additional funds that, you know, Parks and Rec would receive based on this lease with the sign company. And then finally, the last issue talked about was the Planning Commission recommended that this item be presented to the Parks and Rec Commission, which we did last month. The Parks and Rec Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project, but they did have another recommendation, and that was that the city share revenue generated from the sign with the school district. Planning Commission didn't agree with that, and based on the funding and where it needs to go from the site, I don't think we can do that anyway. But that's what the Parks and Rec Commission recommended. So that concludes staff presentation. The city council is asked tonight to conduct a public hearing, and upon closing the public hearing, approve the resolution approving the general plan amendment for 500 Fairway Drive, and then introduce the ordinance amending code section 18.56, and then changing the zoning of 500 Fairway Drive. Scott Sheldon, our consultant working with us on this project, is here, and then he and I would be available to answer any questions you might have.
Well, my only comment at this point, Chris, we're not deciding to put a sign there tonight.
Correct.
So just be clear on that. All we're doing is laying the groundwork, so if everything, all the planets align and it comes to be, we don't have to go through all this then. We're just ready to go.
Correct. So there was another, and that is true, but the other reason we're doing it, too, is when we issue this RFP, if our code, if the site isn't, doesn't allow for a sign, and the code doesn't allow for a sign, it could minimize the number of companies responding to the RFP. So we wanted to do this in advance, again, to get a number of people responding to the RFP.
Okay.
Or companies.
So my concern with the 4,000-foot limit, if we're hoping to develop that Simmerhorn area into some beautiful outdoor shopping or whatever multi-use we're trying to look, would that say they couldn't have a lit sign?
Well, they couldn't have a billboard sign, but they can, and a billboard is basically a sign that does off-site advertising. So when you see the billboard at the auto mall, it advertises other things other than the auto mall. Businesses that locate in that commercial zone would be able to put their signs up advertising their businesses, but not, again, off-site advertising.
Okay.
Chris, you, you've referenced in the beginning that we don't allow for billboards, but this would allow for billboards.
But the way I read the ordinance, it's only for electronic billboards.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So regular billboard static are still disallowed?
Correct.
Okay. The, what is the typical term of a, of a land lease? Or may, I don't know if that's a question for you or for?
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to invite Scott up, because he has a working knowledge of leases, and without stealing Scott's thunder, he's worked with a number of jurisdictions on these type of arrangements, and could probably better answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Sheldon with Terra Realty Advisors, and we have been engaged by the city, and I think we were here before, a few months ago, to start this process. So there's lots of different moving parts to these types of agreements. As you brought up, the question, what are typical, is basically what you negotiate. The standard, because of the capital investment, these signs typically cost between 750 and $1 million. The sign companies that are responsible for that payment usually want a time to amortize that cost out over. So the typical deals that we see are anywhere from 10 to 30 years.
Okay.
And they're typically in 10-year increments, with a, you know, 10 years with a 10-year option and a 10-year option.
Many, okay, are there, okay, so there would be option periods. Would there, is there, are there triggers in there for additional, is it typical to see openers on an agreement where another electronic board came up within a specified period of distance from their board? I mean, is that, is a typical opener? And I'm thinking from a competition point of view.
Are you referring to?
We approve that one, and then 500 feet up the road, we approve another one.
Well, electronic billboards by Caltrans standards have to be 1,000 feet apart.
Okay.
On the same side of the freeway.
Okay.
They can be exactly opposite each other on the other side of the freeway. That's how Caltrans regulates it. What staff and we've talked about in terms of the Planning Commission recommendation is that that 4,000 feet, or whatever you decide, you could say it's both sides of the freeway. You can make that, you can always make things that are more restrictive, you just can't make things less restrictive. But Caltrans does restrict that, 1,000 feet.
And I did have a discussion, Chris and I talked about this the other day, and I, I don't know, and I kind of listened to what Paige had to say, I would be concerned that we'd be closing the door on, you know, future opportunities if we increase it to 4,000. Because the real, the real trigger here is the agreement that has to be entered into between the sign company and the city. If you don't have the agreement, you don't have the sign. So the city, in essence, then dictates where the signs can be located, while at the same time establishing whatever the existing minimum is, and what, and in accordance with what Caltrans says. So I'm not, I personally am not really interested in increasing it to 4,000 feet, because I think it closes the door on future opportunities.
I think the question you're getting to is, if we had another sign proposal come in at 1,000 feet from this one, let's say, if we take that 1,000 feet, it would still have to come back before council, right? And go through the whole process, right?
Yes, because they have to have the agreement.
Yeah, so there'll be a lot of time there to say yes or no.
Exactly.
Would they, I mean, this, this property happens to be owned by the city where the sign's going, but if it was on a piece of property zone commercial owned by someone else, would they still have to come back before us?
Absolutely. That's the way the code is written.
It's always going to require a special use permit.
And we, we wrote the code specifically for that reason.
Okay. Okay, so we need to open a public hearing.
It has been a revenue generator in other jurisdictions, because it's difficult to get these signs. And so you negotiate a long-term lease and lease payment to the city, or however they determine.
Do we have any further questions? Because we'll, we have a public hearing. We need a public hearing.
Sure.
Open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? Any? Okay, close the public hearing. Back to debate.
Back to debate.
Well, I, I could see the, I would also tend to agree that going to 4,000 seems, when you look at the picture, seems way outside of, pretty much prohibits this being almost the only one we would ever have, if in fact it was a generator for income later on. Now, the money generated from this sign would go to Parks and Rec, correct?
That's correct.
Because that property is owned by Parks and Rec.
Maybe our Mr. Solis can respond to that.
Yes, that money would be going back to the O6 fund, which is Parks and Recreation, as, as all revenue goes to that.
Chris, any of these items, 1 through 6, or 1 through 7, that the commission stated or recommended, are any of these incorporated in the existing ordinance as it exists today?
No.
Okay.
The, the only two that really pertain to the ordinance were what you see on the screen there, the 1,000-foot, increasing the 1,000-foot to 4,000, and then limiting the number of signs. The other items were more just recommendations, you know, the next two pertain to like how we issue the RFP.
Yeah. With regard to the RFP, I'm a little concerned, and maybe the consultant can speak to this, about loading it with specialized requirements, such as reimbursement and providing space for local businesses. I understand the concern, but at the same time, I don't want to dissuade, you know, bidders because of a perceived roadblock or hurdle.
Or is that something that's relatively standard in these agreements?
Yes. The typical sign leases that we do are basically multi-layered. The one thing that we want to make sure happens is that the sign company is a member of the TSA, or it's not TSA, but it's the, through the Amber Alert system. So anytime there's an Amber Alert, that would automatically go up. That's a benefit to anybody that's going up and down, obviously, 99 at that time. The other thing that they would have is tied into all the natural emergency networks, so if there's any kind of natural emergency, if there's fires, if there's flood, whatever it happens to be, that would be put up on the board, and this is all at no cost. So the only thing it does is take away time. So when you think about the digital billboards, it's really kind of interesting. They turn on what's called a click, and a click is eight seconds. So every message that you see is basically eight seconds, which means there's eight messages per minute, which if you do the math, and I've already done it before, it's 4.2 million images per year, on a, based on a 24-hour cycle, per sign face, and there's two faces. So there's lots of different opportunities to do things on that. We also negotiate, which is very standard, on a space-available basis, messages for the city in this case, to be able to do public service announcements at no cost. The only thing that the city would be responsible for is producing the camera-ready artwork, and that's just basically PDF stuff in a format that will show well on a 14-by-48-foot sign. So those kinds of things are there. One of the other things that we're doing, and that the sign companies are usually amenable to, is giving a discount. We just negotiated that on another sign deal down in the Los Angeles area for members of the Chamber of Commerce. So those kinds of people, they get a break on that, if they're a member of the chamber. Now, again, these things are all negotiable, and, you know, the sign company, the one thing that to understand is that they're in a business to make money, and they're going to be paying quite a bit of money for the basis of, you know, having that land to be able to construct that improvement on. But at the same time, it's a benefit, it's a really mutual benefit between both parties. That's what we see in our practice on the sign billboard company stuff.
But those aren't issues that we need to decide tonight, correct?
No.
No, correct.
No, the agreement will be coming back.
Because the issue comes up, if you give a discount, then you are taking away from revenue that could go back to the Parks and Rec Fund. But when we first talked about it, that was initially what I was, was asking for, was not that we dedicate signage for it, for, for businesses in our community, but that we gave, that we looked at a cost break.
You know, and I think in fairness, I believe that's really the intent of the Planning Commission, was just really to try to provide some benefit to the local businesses. So if that was to get a hometown discount through the chamber, I think that was satisfactory. I think that kind of worked for them.
But this will, this can all be negotiated at the time in which the RFP.
Right, correct.
Comes forward.
Did I answer your question? Yes, it did. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Resolution.
We'll need the first motion to adopt the resolution, and then a second motion to introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll make the first one, adopt the resolution.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Malsen, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huwer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Do I have a motion to introduce an ordinance amending the GALT municipal code?
So moved.
Why don't you do it? Do we take, where's the 4,000 feet that we don't want?
No, that's not in the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance.
It was left at 1,000, correct?
Correct. The ordinance that is in the packet is the 1,000 feet.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huwer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Regular calendar, treasurer's office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, well, one second, I'm sorry. I apologize. Liberty High School is here. They were earlier on the agenda as a presentation, so if we can go ahead and, if you don't mind, Sean.
No problem.
Liberty High School Homecoming Parade, Liberty Ranch High School.
Got to it.
Welcome.
Causing trouble, I'm so sorry. Sorry. I was out voting, and I grossly.
This is Activity Director Becca Dennis.
Yes, I'm Becca Dennis from Liberty Ranch High School. I'm just here to say thank you for your donation to our parade for the police officers and the CAPS program. It was, again, a wonderful event. I don't know why I didn't just ask you for photos of it for the presentation. Councilwoman Lamson was there, and it was a wonderful time made by all. We had it earlier in the day this time, and that seemed to work out very, very well. All the elementary school kids at Marengo and all the middle school kids at McCaffrey were able to attend and watch the parade. And then, I, I don't attend the parade because I'm back at the school running things, but our principal, Josara Mago, said they had more people out in the streets than ever before. It was a really, really well-attended event, and we really look forward to it again next year. So we just thank you so much for allowing us to have that. And again, I sincerely apologize for being late. I will mail in my vote next time.
No problem, thank you. No problem, thank you.
So Becca, how many floats were there, and how many cars with
So we, we limit our, our school to four floats, because we want our kids to participate in their class floats. But we had twenty-two cars and four floats, so we had about forty, I think it was forty-eight or something royalty, oh no, it was more than that, it was around forty-eight royalty that participated. We had over a hundred and fifty students in the parade as well. So it was, it was a really well-attended parade, and they only had to miss one class, so it was, which we thought was great, and they were like, yeah, but it was a fantastic event, so we appreciate it. Thank you, and again, thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to Treasurer's Report for the period ending September 2018.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Madam Mayor. I'll make this short and quick tonight, because I think a few of us in this room probably want to take a look at election results at some time. So during the, the quarter ending September, the 2018, I purchased six certificates of deposit, and these were six that were, that I had purchased three years ago, and those were, I purchased those at a yield of one point three-five to about one point four. Now, if you remember, three years ago, that, that pretty much wasn't great, right? And so now, in today's world, because of the interest rate increases, I was able to get those at three percent to three point one percent. So what that means basically to the city is, these are three-month, three-year CDs, and we simply earn more interest. That's pretty much it. The monthly yield for September was two point one-eight on our entire portfolio for the month, and the first fiscal quarter interest earned was a little bit over two hundred thousand, which was two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And in comparison, well, again, I'll go back three years ago, that's pretty much what we earned for the entire year. So because of the interest rates have increased, we, as a city, are able to earn a little bit more in interest. And with that, I'll ask for approval of the council for Treasurer's Report ending September 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five-o vote. City Council's Office. Discretionary Funds, Huer approving allocating a thousand, thousand dollars from Mayor Huer's discretionary funds for fiscal year 2018-19 budget for the Galt Senior Resource Center. We had a presentation on that last, last, last meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item. I'll second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Mollson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five-o vote. Discretionary Fund, Cruz approves allocating a thousand from Vice Mayor Cruz discretionary funds for fiscal year 2018-19 budget for the Military Banner Program.
This is a continuing program we've got going to recognize our military veterans, and I want to keep it moving for us.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five-o vote. Tripping over all those names. Anyway, okay. City Manager's Office, Budget Update. City Manager Palazzo.
Want me to do it? Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. This evening, I'd like to present a budget update to the City Council, and I'm going to have Ms. Tyson assist me on a few of the slides as we get into the, the charts and the numbers. Kind of a brief introduction, the purpose of this meeting is to provide a budget update and clarify the fiscal health of the General Fund, and that's the fund that I'm kind of focusing on this evening to talk, talking with you about. In June of 2018 this year, budget presentation failed to properly characterize the impact backfill funding for shortfalls in the Parks and Rec and the Land and Landscape Funds would have on the General Fund. It also failed to show how these shortfalls impact the fund balance in the future. So, you know, it just wasn't clearly presented to the City Council. So I'd like to provide additional information to the council this evening regarding the backfill amounts and the impacts on the available fund balance. Also outline some immediate actions I like to take, and recommend in next steps. The chart in front of you is, should look familiar, it's been presented several times through our budget documents, and the chart was generated to show the council, you know, what your reserve, twenty-five percent reserve looks like, and, you know, kind of the non-committed or the general fund unallocated fund balance, basically the dollars that you have in, in the reserve account that's not allocated for anything. During the budget presentation, there's, you know, two things or two points that I made through that presentation. One was that, well, actually, let me back up a little bit here. During that presentation, we indicated, you know, four point four million was available in the unassigned funding with the General Fund, and we also identified about three point eight million dollars in unfunded needs, which is on the right-hand side of that chart. Included the vehicles, building maintenance, parks, you know, things that, the deferred maintenance that we've been talking about and going through for the last, you know, year and a half. And the two things that I pointed out to the council is, you know, wanted to use this four million dollars or so to create some internal service funds, you know, basically set up some funds so we can start addressing some of our long-term needs and start, you know, funding that. With that statement made in the general fund, that's really not able to happen, based on the next chart that we're going to show you on, on the flows of the budget. And I also told you during the budget meeting process that we had a very lean budget. I went back through, worked with the directors, you know, the budget that we're working with does not have a lot of contingency, or almost no contingency. You know, I had to say weekly, you know, I'm getting directors coming to me saying, hey, we didn't, you know, see this coming, we need to, you know, look at, you know, how are we going to pay for X, Y, Z? For instance, I think we had, you know, some HVAC systems that have failed, you know, within our buildings, we've had some, you know, tree removal that we've had to do that we didn't plan on, you know, because we didn't know that was coming up. And I told the council at the time, when those, you know, items come up, I'm going to be back to the council asking for some budget amendments, and a lot of these items will be coming back before you at mid-year for budget amendments. So, you know, those items, you know, just, you know, you know, we weren't, you know, aware of. The, so what was presented in the budget is, we're going to use this, you know, four million dollars to try and create these internal service funds. With the flow of funds, let me take a look at the next slide, on this chart is actually numbers right out of the budget, but we added some cumulative impacts and effects, and, you know, the clarity that I wanted to make to the council this evening is, you know, taking a look at those long-term cumulative impacts. You know, before we get into that, I do want to make, you know, the numbers in the budget are accurate. You know, the, the, you know, it was the presentation that wasn't accurate, and there's no accounting errors, you know, in this budget. You know, those, those numbers are accurate, it's all based on, you know, how, how staff presented these numbers. So this slide in front of you illustrates the operating costs and funding shortfalls within Parks and Recs and Light and Landscape Districts over previous fiscal years, and, you know, shows you the current two-year budget cycle. To avoid significant service reductions, the funding shortfalls have been funded by the General Fund in the past. So with Parks and Recs, and, you know, we've been calling Parks and Recs a subsidy, and what I want to do is, I want to get away from that, because it's not really a subsidized Parks and Rec, you know, it's a policy decision on how we want to spend our General Fund. Lighting Landscape Districts, little different story, you know, those are subsidy, you know, the lighting landscape districts were established, you know, to cover the costs of the maintenance within, and within those districts. If, you know, we exceed those costs, then, if the General Fund has been subsidizing the revenue that is generated, you know, from those properties to, to continue to, you know, do, do the ongoing maintenance. This slide also illustrates the dramatic effect that these funding shortfalls will have on the available unassigned balance with the General Fund absent intervention. Clearly, there's no supplemental funding. Will remain to address the vehicle needs, building maintenance, and parks and infrastructure needs, or any other needs, besides its unfunded pensions or liabilities. So, you know, as, you know, Ms. Tyson's going to walk you through kind of these numbers and kind of what the, the chart shows, you're going to see that, you know, that extra, the four million dollars that were allocated, it's not going to be able to be used based on our current year budget adoption. And note, you know, on the other council commitments up there on the slide, you know, those are labor contract commitments that the council approved after the budget was adopted, and so those are items that we told the council we would be bringing back at our mid-year budget review. So I'm going to have Ms. Tyson walk you through this chart up here. We'll clarify a little bit more.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Gene?
So, I'm going to try and make this very simple, the, the top line that says General Fund totals, those are totals you've seen before in the budget. So those are the unassigned, available unassigned balance in the General Fund. So the first column that says audited fund balance, so that, that's the audited, that's the beginning point from last fiscal year. Then on top of that, we've layered in, the, the next column is the fiscal year 2018 activity, that's the projection that, that was right there in the budget. From that, then we're going to put in, each column is going to be the next fiscal year's accumulation of the fund balance plus the activity, so you've got a subtotal there, and then the next year's activity, then a subtotal, then the next year's activity. So one kind of grows on the other. The rows down, down the side are the Parks and Rec and the lighting and landscape districts. And the reason why these are listed here are, these are the, the anticipated activities that have less revenue than they have expenditures in the budget that you already saw. So from that information, we know that the history is that the additional funds will come from the General Fund. So they'll come from that four point four million that, that we talked about before that is available and assigned. So from that, the, I can't even read this. So at the end of 2019, that fund balance will diminish to one point eight-six-seven, based on that budget and this, and the backfill that will be required from General Fund. And then, absent any other activity, it'll diminish again for the 2020 year to the ending balance of nineteen thousand. So basically, your four point four million that was unassigned in the budget process, if we, if we look forward in, into a forward budget projection, using the numbers directly from that budget, that, that money will be exhausted.
Okay. So, just to put it in my layman terms, if we don't make a change in what we are projecting, that at the end of 2020, the unassigned that's currently there in our budget would be depleted.
Correct.
And we would have no unassigned budget at that point.
Correct.
We would be, okay. And so, basically, what was presented to us, the four point four million is there, I mean, that is there.
Correct.
It's just the policy decisions that council needs to make going forward regarding what we're going to do with that four point four, because when the budget was presented to us, there were some ideas of our unfunded liability about, about setting up funds to take care of deferred maintenance and, and the deferred maintenance on Park and Rec, because it's been going on for a very long time. Councils have, have not made the policy decision in the past, going on for ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, when all those parks were being built, to how we're going to maintain those facilities. And so what's happening now is, we need to figure out how we're going to, at the end of 2020, still have an unassigned surplus, or unassigned balance, so that we can take care of those emergency kind of things that come up during any budget year, or negotiations, or any of the other things that come up. Am I reading that correctly, Gene?
You are.
Very well said.
Yeah, sorry. And, and the one thing that we need to keep in mind is, we still have all this deferred maintenance hanging out there.
Yes.
And so we're going to have to, you know, talk a little bit more about that here on the, the next couple of slides.
And the other question is, what to do with the landscaping and, you know, lighting and landscaping districts? You know, and maybe a hard discussion on services.
When we talked about the budget in July or June, June, July, when we talked about the budget then, we weren't really, it wasn't really presented taking into account of how much lighting and landscape was hitting our General Fund, and how much we needed in lighting and landscape to continue to maintain the level of service that we currently provide with the increase in cost, and how much more Parks and Rec was going to require from our General Fund, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And actually, you're jumping to my next two slides here, which is great.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Since we just got handed these, I really didn't, I just know what I read in the report.
Go ahead. The, this slide, you just, it's not in your packet, but we wanted to try and illustrate a little bit more of that flow, you know, of the dollars. You want to add anything on that one?
So this is really the same schedule, it just has a column at the, at the end, and what, what you, what we're really trying to demonstrate here is that, based on the two-year budget, the over, the backfill or overrun that will be required of General Fund or some other mechanism is about one point five million each year annually.
So I guess, message, and, you know, apology on the presentation with the budget, you know, that, you know, it's something that, you know, I didn't want to be before the council this evening to kind of tell you that, you know, our message was, you know, off course. But the, you know, and our adopted budget, I guess, is lean. Our directors and staff are doing the best we can to kind of maintain, but we do have, you know, this, this gap that we need to fill, and that's going to be a challenge. You know, we're probably finding that challenge right now with our operational needs, and there are going to be some supplemental mid-year budget adjustments we're going to need to do to address those needs, and we'll be back before the council into December, January, you know, with that mid-year budget, probably January, once we get the audit completed and, and bringing that all back to the council. I think in the interim, and I'm making some recommendations, let's jump to the recommendation slide, is, you know, suspending completion of some non-essential maintenance and activities and procurement of non-essential capital equipment in those landscaping and lighting districts, just to kind of, kind of hold the line, so, you know, we can, you know, kind of see where we're going. I'd like to have a series of budget workshops with the council. I like to really kind of dig into, you know, some of the details of our General Fund. A lot of the discussion's going to be policy, and it's going to be policy on service. You guys, you said it earlier, you know, you know, we're going to have to take a look at our service levels that, you know, we provide the community. We're also going to have to, you know, take a look at, you know, some other creative, you know, you know, ways of filling, you know, these gaps, you know, and, you know, earlier, Ms. Tyson and I were talking, and, you know, it's not really a, how did you say it?
And I've only taken a quick review of this, so I look forward to digging into it, but I don't see an expenditure problem. I see a service, the expenditures match the service levels. I see more of the, the revenue side or the service level side. So the, the city has done a good job at, at digging into the budget and, and reducing budgets that aren't necessary. Obviously, we can, we will be doing more digging, so we may find some things, but on the surface, I don't see an expenditure problem. on the surface, I don't see an expenditure problem. It's not that you're overspending the budgets.
So, yeah, I think that challenge is going to be, you know, you know, what service levels do we want to provide, you know, from the dollars that we, you know, we have in, in the general fund? And there are other ways. The land and landscape, you know, districts, you know, we've had a discussion on that during the budget process. I've heard several of you talk about, you know, kind of, you know, taking a, kind of a deeper dive into, you know, those districts and, and taking a look at, you know, areas that, you know, aren't within landscaping and lighting districts. How do we address that? Like to have a, a budget workshop just focused on that. You know, so there's, you know, other, you know, creative ideas on, on how do we, you know, kind of take a look at, you know, increasing some revenues and also looking at our service levels.
So, can I just have, and I know Mayor Cruz wants a, has a question, but when you say suspend completion of non-essential maintenance activities, what do you mean?
So there's, some areas within...
So what are non-essential maintenance activities? I don't know what that is.
So let me kind of pull out a, an example of something from parks and rec or public works that, you know, we discussed. Tell me, I hear, just...
Well, being responsible for the facilities maintenance, in the budget, as approved, there were a number of deferred maintenance items where we're going to try to start giving attention to examples, duct cleaning at several facilities. Well, is that essential? Is it critical? It's probably been a decade, maybe two decades since that's been done. Would one more year be critical? If it'll help us move to, to a better point in time? Exterior painting on buildings, particularly non-wood buildings, in the budget, we're painting at the municipal service center. That's a metal building. Yes, the paint's starting to chalk and oxidize a bit. It's not unsightly yet. It's not in danger of rusting. So we could probably kick that down to the next two-year budget. So it'd be sort of looking at what we must do to protect our facilities, protect public safety, protect the health and welfare of those that are in the buildings, like roof leaks, that would be essential. We don't want more damage to occur within the building. Giving a facelift to the paint in council chambers would probably be non-essential.
Okay.
So we would look to further defer some of those deferred maintenance items until funding is available.
Good question. I don't, they gave me a list earlier, and I haven't looked at it for a few weeks.
No, that, that explains it. I just want to make sure, I mean, that we're still taking care of those, you know, health and safety.
Health and safety issues are, you're being taken care of, you know, we recently had some...
And we're really just talking about suspending them for this fiscal year until we can have the workshops.
Until the workshops.
I want to put a hold on it. I want to have some workshops. I want to work with the council and kind of go through those items in detail, and kind of what are our priorities? You know, it's just like our deferred maintenance, you know, our vehicle needs are, you know, there's things that weren't even in the budget this year that we deferred, which is that list. There's some things that we tried to add, you know, to the budget to start, you know, kind of catching up, and, you know, those items are the ones that will kind of, you know, hold, make, do hold on until I can get to some workshops with the council.
Go ahead, Mark.
Now, the, the lighting landscaping district, the service levels will be part of the discussion too, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. Because like, I don't know if it, if SMUD's doing it to the city, but I know residential-wise, they're, they're changing the rate schedule between five and eight. Things like, you know, they don't turn the streetlights on until later.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Streetlights are a service level. I mean, it's a service item that we can discuss.
It's a service item, exactly.
Absolutely.
But, but those are kind of hard decisions, discussions.
Those are, yeah.
You're done.
I'm done, yeah. It's your turn. We'll get him.
A real quick question on L and L three. It's kind of confusing to me. I see the other lighting and landscape districts through, through fiscal 19 and fiscal 20. The numbers are changing, but L and L three, we get to 19 and 20, we have zeros.
Because they have an increase.
You could, that one isn't under 218, that's why.
Yeah, I, maybe I could take a shot at that, and Claire can nod or, or get the hook if I... These are cumulative numbers in the yellow columns. And we started with a negative balance in, a year ago, coming out of that budget. We are in the black for year one, the current year we're in, and year two of the current two-year budget. So the deficit is not growing. It was not a loan. It was basically, the lighting and landscape district has not been required to pay it back. So that's just the cumulative amount. It was a starting amount, and it hasn't grown because they are now in the black, and hopefully will stay that way. So it, it's kind of the anomaly here. It's doing what lighting and landscape districts are supposed to do, and that's pay their own way. And mainly because with new development, it's been going into that district, so it's got a growing revenue base. It is also the only one that is indexed adjustments to a, to a, a, an index for CPI, et cetera. So it's kind of trying to keep pace with inflation.
Well, I think you and I both agree on the fact that L and L's have seen their day, and we should be changing this out to something a little more flexible.
Well, probably certainly if our forefathers knew what we know today about L and L's and Prop 218, we might have gone a different direction. But certainly, for the new development that's currently being conditioned, we have been recommending that we go to community facilities districts rather than, which are based in Streets and Highways Code, the lighting and landscape districts.
Good question, Mark, because that'll also be part of this discussion too, I'm sure. Be doing, you know, looking at, at maybe doing something like, like that.
Well, it's really interesting to look at, other cities are struggling with the L and L issue also. I mean, that it's, that everybody...
Yeah.
...formed these L and L's back in the 80s and, and 90s, and now, and...
And then it would change because of 218?
Yeah. And now they're having to...
These are not uncommon issues and problems that other cities are having. We're not alone in this. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So I have one. Just for the record, as I, we've, some of us have been questioned by, a lot by the constituents. We've known about it for a while, for a few months. Why do we wait till now to, to bring it out? And why didn't we bring it out sooner? Just...
Uh, the dollar, or the...
Just the, the budget issues and the, because it's been a few months, so, just, so they know what, because we were...
As it was explained to me, is that you had to go through and find out what the issues were.
Yeah. It takes time to go through the process and kind of take a look at, you know, our, our budget and the numbers and kind of understand that, so.
Okay.
Has, has the audit been completed?
No, we're in, in the process of doing the audit. We'll come to the council in January.
Yeah.
Had to give our new finance director a chance to look at it.
Yeah, then the audit isn't even complete either, so.
So any further questions for Jean? No?
Thank you.
Actually, you know, it sounds like...
Well, I guess we need to authorize him and direct him.
Yeah, I guess.
He's a good person.
Actually, it's, it sounds like we're, you know, we're being proactive here, and, and trying to head some potential problem off.
Yeah.
So we need a formal recommendation to move?
Yes, there is.
Is there public comment?
Oh, do we have any public comment? Sorry, sorry. No, no public comment?
Okay.
Nope.
I've moved staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Molsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, didn't even hear you. I thought you were...
Voice broke.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, five vote.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, Fourth Street Traffic Calming Study Costs. Mr. Winkler?
Well, out of mayor and council members, this is an item that's been before you two meetings ago, and we were directed to prepare some cost estimates to bring the item back by way of just quick review. Attached to our staff report is the staff report that was brought to you several meetings ago regarding the recommendation coming forward from the Public Safety Committee, that the city council consider additional safety improvements along the Fourth Street corridor, whether that be signing, lighting, crosswalk enhancements, et cetera. And we had a rather lengthy discussion a couple of meetings ago, at which point the, the direction was to bring back a cost estimate. That's what's presented to you tonight. To bring in a, an independent consultant that specializes in traffic calming and the types of issues that were discussed, we're looking at about a $20,000 estimate. We actually have gotten a quote and a proposal from one of our on-call consultants that specializes in pedestrian and traffic calming type measures. So really, the question before you tonight is, if you feel that there's a bona fide traffic safety concern on the Fourth Street corridor, are we willing to spend an additional $20,000 studying that? That, that $20,000 would yield a series of additional recommendation possibilities or options, along with the potential cost to implement those options. The $20,000 wouldn't get you any implemented solutions. It'd be more to bring you a palette of options or further consideration. I would just remind you that as part of the conversation several meetings ago, that city attorney brought to our attention that, you know, from a, from a sort of a litigation perspective, we are currently have available to the city some sort of indemnification for an existing condition. But if we are to make changes, that whatever changes we make would need to fairly closely follow the, the generally accepted practices and engineering practices set forth in the, you know, uniform codes for traffic, lighting and signing and legends and whatnot, and to avoid opening up exposure to the city if we did some partial enhancements that didn't really follow the recommended guidelines. So if we are interested in making additional changes out there, I would recommend we proceed with the study if we feel there's a, a need for that.
I've got a question, maybe, maybe between you and the chief, Mr. Winkler, you can give me an answer. Have we done any targeted traffic enforcement out there? So we don't, maybe he gives an idea how big the problem is?
I'll defer to chief.
Oh, he's got a paper.
I didn't want to...
I need my glasses in order to do that. So the short answer is yes. In that area, there's been 10 citations written, based on the directed enforcement in 45 instances. Of the 45 instances, most of them are either calls for service or officer-initiated activity. And of the citations that were out, that were written out there, they were all unregistered vehicles, unlicensed driver, broken windshields, and broken headlights. So there wasn't, there are no speeding citations were issued during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on a second, please. Okay, I, I can understand the broken headlights and the registration and so forth, but how can you tell me that it was for an unlicensed driver when you had to have PC for the stop?
Well, you know, when you run these reports, it just gives you the primary, the number one citation, so, but there weren't any speeding citations issued.
We don't know what the PC for the stops were for each of those citations.
Not in this report I have in front of me.
So it could very well have been excessive speed or rolling a stop sign.
In, in this report I was provided, it doesn't show any speeding citations issued.
Or it could have been for the broken headlight.
Or the lack of registration.
But that's just, that's, to me, it's a little vague.
Looking at the first report, and it talks about the speed limit and then average speed and the 85 percentile, that, that seems all within reasonable numbers, at least according to what I recall. In accordance with the handbook, the freeway, or the traffic handbooks, correct?
Yeah, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Controls, you know, dictates that you would normally look at your 85th percentile, the speed at which 85% of the cars are traveling at or below, to determine if that marries up well with the actual posted speed limit.
Right.
In this case, the 85th percentile was below 30 miles an hour, which is fairly well-aligned with the 25 mile an hour prima facie speed limit, and, which has subsequently been posted out there, just as a reminder.
And, and you gave the peak hourly rates of 157 vehicles. What is the capacity of those roads? Just an estimate?
Well...
For comparison purposes.
I don't have that memorized, or, but 157 vehicles is extremely low volume. Typical two-lane, you know, collector in a downtown area can easily accommodate, you know, 1,000 vehicles an hour.
I would venture to guess we have residential streets that, that exceed this number.
Well, they would both exceed the volume and would certainly exceed the speed.
Speed.
And mo, I would venture that this is probably among the lowest average speed of, of any downtown street.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that we have $15,000 to $20,000 to spend on, on a study of something that staff are telling us, and all of the studies have shown are not, is not necessary. There's not a need to have traffic calming on Fourth Street.
Additional traffic.
Additional cal, traffic calming on Fourth Street. Right. So to spend $20,000 to study something that's not necessary, that there's no data to show that it's necessary, at a time in which there's many other things we could spend $20,000 on.
Well, but if I understand correctly, that would not be general fund money, that would be measure A, money's correct?
Well, he, we would have to have council approve a budget. Where the, the road fund, standard gas tax is pretty well tapped out, so the only available road funding source would be measure A at this point.
But those have already been allocated for other things in this fiscal year.
There is, it's some unallocated measure A that would be saving as matches for grant applications, et cetera. So one way or the other, you're taking, if you take more money for a study and any eventual outcome from that study, you'd be taking that out of the pot to be used for either matching other grant application for future projects, or take it out of your ability to maintain or rehabilitate roadways.
Well, either way, you're still spending city funds on a study that is unnecessary according, according to the numbers that have been presented. So I guess that's, I kind of understand with what the mayor's saying. I don't care what fund it comes out of. If it doesn't make sense, why would you spend the money in the first place?
And we have other areas that, I think that if there was, if, if there was a need to spend money, there's other areas in town that have a much higher traffic impact, whether it's Elk Hills and, and Walnut. I mean, I hear about that, that constantly, and, and I know it's planned, it's in the plan to fix it. But, you know, I mean, I hear about that as being a much greater need than I do Fourth Street.
I'm sure they have more traffic on Adair than they have, yeah. That's another problem, that's another area that's...
Yeah, I mean, there's other areas.
Yep.
I just wouldn't see that we could, that it's responsible to spend $20,000 to study something that staff and all of the reports that staff have done, and all the traffic studies staff have done, and all the enforcement, and to spend money on something that so obviously doesn't warrant it.
Realistically, what, what stands out to me the most is 68%. What we were initially asking for were crosswalk warning signs, but what really stands out to me is that 68% of the pedestrians are not using the crosswalk.
That's an unfortunate...
Because they feel safe.
No, it's not illegal.
No, it's because they feel safe. You're sta, if you rode across that street, there's, you can, you have good visibility and you feel safe.
So that's what stands out to me, that they're not using the crosswalks anyway. But hopefully, when we get the parking lot done, maybe we could do something out of there. We'll see.
So unless I hear otherwise, I mean, do we have direction for staff to receive a report and file, and provide direction? My direction would be that, at this point, we do nothing.
Second.
Anything else?
That's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to argue doing otherwise at this point, you know? It, it is with all the information that we have.
Yeah, I feel like Mr. Clarkson has provided a plethora of information already.
Yes, he has. He's hiding back there.
Do you need a formal motion on that?
Jim, we don't need a motion. Do we need a motion?
If you could just do a motion that the direction is to not pursue further traffic calming analysis on Fourth Street at this time, that would...
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Mayor Huer, second by Councilmember Molsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Nay.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, four, one, four, one vote. Communications?
Don't have anything.
Nothing? City Clerk's report?
Nothing tonight.
There's an election.
And we don't have, there's an election. And we don't have a meeting, we don't have a second meeting in November.
Good point. Thank you for voting. Yes, the second meeting in November has been canceled. Yes, the second meeting in November has been canceled.
So everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Comments by staff? Mr. Winkler?
Two quick announcements. It's coming today, Friday, from six-thirty in the morning till about six PM at night. We're going to have major paving operations on Marengo Road, the west, easterly frontage, rather, of River Oaks Three. We'll be paving out the area, out to their sidewalk, so that we controlled traffic all day long. It is a school day. We are sending out an advisory in the morning to school districts and highway patrol and the police department, fire department, et cetera. We are recommending alternate routes, particularly during peak hours for traffic. The road will be open, but it'll be controlled one-way traffic with flag controls. So there during morning school rush, there may be a fair backup to those that can perhaps go around and use Corillian to Walnut and to Liberty Ranch High School, that would be recommended, or other alternate routes. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that, and we'll be putting a blurb on the face, on the city's Facebook page as well. And also got the numbers in for October water conservation, and we dropped a little bit from twenty-one percent in September to eighteen percent in October, but I think we did have some early October rains last year. But this is actually comparing to 2013 and 14, and so we're continuing to have, hovering around that twenty percent water conservation mark. So we need to keep up the good work as we go into winter.
Mr. Rice?
A couple items. Just a reminder that the industrial annexation will be going to the LAFCO board, and the first meeting, or its meeting in December, which is the first Wednesday of the month. Then a new standing item that I have is Climate Action Plan. We're getting ready to roll that out to the public. We're actually looking to use the GALT Youth Commission to conduct public meetings for the Climate Action Plan. We think it's a good link to what we're doing. And then the Corillian Boulevard Master Plan, the Complete Streets Plan that we're looking to put it on, we're looking to come out to the public with it, and we're looking to use the Public Safety Committee as a venue to work with the public on that plan. And a bit of good news, we did get a design plan in for the senior project. Dry Creek Oaks, the application was submitted at the beginning of this week.
Strange.
So we're kind of excited that we got that in.
Can you tell us who?
Who?
Riverland Homes. Little bit different, so they haven't done work in GALT before. They, I think their closest project is actually ION that they're working on.
Well, that'd be a great experience for the Youth Commission to...
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, what better link to work on measures to protect the future than using the youth?
Yeah.
Have you approached them yet?
I've been talking to John Gordon about scheduling a meeting.
He'll want you to come to a meeting.
Great. Ms. Tyson, anything else?
No, thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Cora?
I just wanted to welcome Claire. We know you'll be a great asset to the team.
Do we have any positions that we're currently recruiting for?
We do. We're currently recruiting for the position of Public Works Director. Steve decided to give his tentative retirement notice for the end of the year, so we are currently accepting the applications for that. We also have parks maintenance worker and a plant maintenance mechanic position that we're currently recruiting for. So if anyone is interested, please go to the city website for more information and to apply.
Mr. Solis?
If some of you have been by Harvey Park, you may have noticed a couple of trees that have been taken down. We've taken down five large eucalyptus trees in between the community garden and the baseball field. Last, I think it was a week and a half ago, one of them fell into the fence, causing a lot of damage. Looking into it, they were rotted out in the middle. We inspected the other four that were on that site, and they were all hollowed out, so we had to remove them for safety issues. That's one of those unexpected costs that Jean was talking about that we don't budget for because we don't know that it's going to happen and just cross our fingers, but those are the things that we had to, just had to do.
Fortunately, it was just a fence and not a person.
Yes, so, and...
Eucalyptus are notorious.
Yeah, that's why we took the other, that's why we took the other four down, because we were afraid that that might happen, so.
And would like to talk about December first, since we don't have another meeting?
Oh, that's right, huh? So Lighting of the Night event, where, will be Saturday, December first, and we have our parade going again. We have our, our, our events, our musical events at Littleton Center. We are working with the Chamber again. They will be providing the Santa and the pictures, along with some hot chocolate. They'll also have their event in the Farmers' and Merchants Parking Lot, and we'll have the food trucks on C Street, so. Everything starts at four o'clock.
Let me ask you another question. I just have a brief question. I, I thought that we had made a policy or made a decision that if the city council sponsor, if the city sponsors events, that we would be recognized on literature by those events? We have a requirement of that or not?
You are correct.
Okay. Because one of the events I attended recently that I know we paid for security for, and there was no recognition, so I'll get back with you about it.
There, there's been a couple of events and we've been bringing that up. We've been keeping an eye on that.
Yeah.
And we've, we'll be talking to the event organizers after that.
Thank you. Chief?
We've been really, really busy in the police department, and we've got a lot of events coming up. First, I know you probably can't see if you're more than an inch away from me, but it's Movember. I'm actually growing a mustache, is five days old. I can't see it, but I'm really close. You'll, you'll, I hate it, by the way, I can't wait to shave it, but for the rest, you'll see police officers with, at best, a goatee, but they're growing a mustache and goatee to, to bring awareness to men's health issues. So, you know, yeah, Tom, keep looking, it's, it's there, I promise. My wife complains about it every day.
I'm thinking red shoe polish.
It's only, it's only five days old, so.
Okay.
So anyway, so you'll see the police officers, the mustache, goatee, or Fu Manchu, those are the three options that they have. And we'll have a...
Fu Manchu.
Well, isn't that what the mustache that comes down with no hair right here? So, yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's a contest, and there'll be a winner announced at the end of the month. If you've noticed on my uniform, there's a new pin. This is the United States Air Force pin in honor of Veterans Day. All of our veterans in the police department, which we have many, were given their respective pins from their military branch, and they can wear those proudly on their uniforms, so in honor of Veterans Day. On November first, I had the pleasure of speaking at the GALT Community Care Coalition by the invitation of Barbara Payne. It was a, a pleasure to speak to them, got some great questions. GALT PD is having their first holiday open house on December first. We're going to start our media campaign tomorrow. It's a Polar Express theme for children to come in. It's from, going to be from five to eight. Got a lot of very, very excited employees in the department. It's going to be an amazing setup inside the department. There's a loop. If you know the design of the police department, the city, the department's circle, so the whole event will be taking place within, with inside the police department. Great, great event, can't wait for that.
Did you say December first?
I'm sorry, December tenth, if I misspoke. From five to eight PM.
Okay.
The GALT PD Annual Awards Banquet is December twelfth, from five to eight at Brewster's, so we're looking forward to that. December sixteenth is the GALT PD CSD Fire Holiday Toy Drive from ten to two at Station Forty-four. The management team on November first participated in a Sacramento County Emergency Services exercise. It was a flood exercise, some great training and great representation there. We have recruit testing on November thirteenth. We're anticipating about sixty-five attendees for that. We've been doing a lot of disaster drills at the elementary school districts, working with them on their disaster preparedness for any kind of critical incident or emergency. You see? And our recruitment team has been working feverishly with the conditional job offers that I've offered in recent weeks. If all those pan out, we should be down to one vacancy left in the police department, so that's fantastic news.
Good. And that note about Veterans Day, tenth of November is the Marine Corps Birthday, two-hundred forty-three.
What's amazing to me is, is that the only, that's the only military birthday that everybody knows the date by heart, so, but, you're right.
Jean?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
I have nothing further to add. Happy Thanksgiving. It's hard to believe we're in the holidays already.
Comments by council member? Want to start?
No, I'm done. I'm good.
Kurt?
I'm done.
Paige?
No, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to, just so everybody can have their calendar, because I know everybody's calendar gets filled up, but Craig Morris from South County Services did contact me that they're doing the senior dinner on, the senior luncheon on December fourteenth. So I just wanted to let the other council members know about that, so since we, we fill, is that the, that's the same day as the employee recognition?
No, it can't be. It's the thirteenth.
Oh.
The thirteenth.
Their, theirs is on a Thursday, ours is on a Friday.
Oh, okay, so theirs is the thirteenth.
Yes.
Yours is the thirteenth. Yeah, and the dinner, and lunch is being provided by the Real Men's Club.
Yes, the, the difference this year will be is that Middles and Wills will not be, Middles and Wills will not be participating in this senior luncheon.
What was the time on that again?
Eleven thirty. What you told me. Actually, I guess, yeah, I guess they're going to provide the dessert.
Correct.
Yeah. The, um, Real Men's Club's going to provide the foods.
So this will be a South County Service event.
Okay. So, well, meeting adjourned. Did she ask Mark? Yeah? She said it? Did she ask Mark? I did.